I think I have everything set. I'd like to call the meeting to order. At seven thirty-two. In attendance is Mary Daly, Dennis Muzzo, from McCarthy, Dmitri Tychowski, sorry?
Dolchinsky.
Dolchinsky, Andrea Lombard. Is Brad up there? Oh, I'm sorry. Brian. Brad, are you on? Okay, I thought I heard Brad's voice. So let's see. I can appoint Brian as a voting member. And John is a voting member. Yeah, and John is a voting member. So we have a quorum. First order of business is Andrea. So I'm sorry, I've left some things off the agenda. I was on my way back and did this agenda. I was on my way back from dropping my daughter off at University of South Carolina and did this at a rest stop and sent it out. So there's a couple of things that are missing. Andrea, could you make a motion to add those, please?
Yes, so I'm making a motion to add to the agenda under old business. The pump-out mailer and ordinance, the pump-out mailer card, and also the card for the notice of referendum. I think everything else, Steve, will fall under your report. Should it be a separate item or can we have a discussion with your report?
Yeah, I think that the presentation I gave to the board, I'll just do under my report. So I don't think we need it. All right.
Those two items.
Do we have a second on that? One in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, so the motion carries. So those two will be added under old business. Next on the, on the agenda would be approval of the July twenty twenty-five minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Is there a discussion? Any discussion?
Sure.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking, when does the discussion come in?
Usually, usually, no one ever does it right, but usually you're supposed to have a motion to consider it. It's seconded. Then there's discussion. Usually people discuss it and then there's a motion to second. More discussion, no. So I've been trying to follow that. So is there a second? John seconded. Discussion, comments on the minutes?
I tried to access the minutes this morning. And when I go to the minutes portion of the website, the town website, comes up with the minutes from July two thousand nineteen. Nineteen. And I, and I sent an email to Katie this morning.
She might have fixed it because I was able to.
I didn't get an email back from her, so.
I, I was able to access it this afternoon.
All right, so. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So in the minutes, you say that you were working on a PowerPoint presentation, that you were going to send it out to everybody? The WPCA members, to review comment at the August meeting. You all set now? I'm just saying that in the minutes, you said that you were working on a PowerPoint presentation, we would send it out to every WPCA member to review and comment at this meeting. Did you send it out? Because if you did, I didn't get it.
I, I did not send it out. I presented it to the Board of Selectmen. And they asked me to present it at this meeting, so.
Do you have copies for everyone here?
I'm just gonna present it like.
Are you gonna do it online? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In the minutes again, in regard, there was mentioned in the minutes about the forgivable loan. And when Dennis asked you, are we twenty-nine point seven, you know, there was, there was this discussion going on about twenty-nine point seven versus twenty-five percent. This month, it says twenty-five percent, as does Mailman's latest spreadsheet from Geek Von Law, Fussin' O'Neill. And do you think that very clearly, multiple times, that the forgivable loan is capped at fifteen million or twenty-five percent? So I, I just need an understanding, when you say that we're eligible for twenty-nine point seven, how have you really, have you read the forgivable loan? Because I haven't, I've asked.
Point of order here? Is that actually an edit to the minutes? But approving the minutes is, are the minutes accurate or not accurate? It's not about asking questions about the content.
Until we have discussed. Because, yeah, I would say it's, yeah, bad information, but whatever.
Is there any other comments on the minutes, the accuracy of the minutes? Okay, can I have a motion to approve? As, as amended? Right, 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 okay. Can I have a motion to, to approve, please?
We have a motion.
We had a motion. We seconded.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain. Because that wasn't able to read it. I was not here, so I'm gonna abstain also.
You can abstain. Technically, you need a reason to abstain. Like a, a conflict of interest or something like that. You, you really shouldn't just abstain for this.
I guess my, my reason for abstaining is I think there's pertinent information missing from the minutes. That was in the discussions, but that would be my reason.
That would have been like something you could have brought up to amend minutes, but, okay, fine. One, two, three. No pass? Is that right? One, Andrea, two, Dmitri, three, four. Here, I see Brian. Thank you, Brian. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I just wanted to make sure you got on, upstairs in the boardroom.
I guess I can vote to approve. All right.
Eight voting, right, including you?
Seven voting, one, two, three, four, four, I guess it's four to three then, right? There's eight people, two.
I don't know how abstentions count.
I honestly don't know. It's not a no.
It's not a no, but it's not a yes.
Yeah, I think if you don't agree with the minutes, it should be opposed. It shouldn't be abstaining, because you were here for it.
I wasn't here, so.
And I couldn't get to the minutes on the website, so. So it passes four to, to abstent, three abstentions. Actually had that. Our time passing. All right, next on the agenda is the chairman's report. I'll start off with the CSA update. We're getting closer.
Budget. Did you skip or did?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. We have, I'm sorry, thank you. Budget and expenses. The next thing on the agenda is budget and expenses. Andrea, do you want to take us through that? Could you unmute her?
Can't hear her.
I can't. Andrea, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, she's muted. Thanks, thanks, Andrea. Can you unmute yourself, Andrea? Andrea?
You're muted.
She's trying.
Hit the right button.
It's up top. Top right corner.
Does this help?
There you go.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can. We can hear you.
Okay, perfect, all right. I had two places to do that. Okay, the expenses for this past month were a hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents for the clerk. I want to recap that at this point our expenses for the year have, are reflecting thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. But we used up twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents in carryover, which was legal and the shared infrastructure. So I, I think it's important to note that, because year-to-date, we spent fifty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents total. So our legal budget has been our largest expense by far. Our remaining balance for the year is fifty-four thousand nine hundred and six dollars and sixty-six cents. And, wait a minute, there's in the ARPA balance, this is for the pipe under Route one fifty-six, the shared infrastructure. We have a remaining a hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents in that budget line. And I'm also reviewing any past invoices that Martha was able to send my way to see if we can get any of those covered with the clean water funds during the planning phase of this sewer project. Any questions about the budget? Or the report?
Andrea, when you said the year, you're talking from July first?
So it's the fiscal year that we had. So our, our annual budget that we had submitted and approved was ninety-one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. But we also had twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents in carryover, which we completely zeroed out. So at this point, our remaining balance, because it seems like we spent less than we did, is fifty-four thousand nine hundred and six dollars and sixty-six cents. And our largest remaining area is, we still have plenty to spend on the attorneys, because the legal was our largest, by far, expense this year.
But again, it's, Andrea, it's, it starts July first. Our fiscal year starts July first.
Right, and we did not put in for carryover, because we had spent so much in our carryover last year, and it, the way they're doing it this year is it has to be part of a capital project in order to go for carryover. So we're preparing for next year's budget.
All right, so I, I, I have a feeling that.
Go ahead.
I have a feeling that, that things weren't, we should have our, our budget request from last year should have been the starting point on July first of this year. I don't think we've spent forty-something thousand in attorney's fees since July first, have we?
So we spent six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents in carryover. And out of our.
But is that from July first?
Yes, and then plus that, we spent one thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. So we spent almost ten thousand dollars so far, yes, since July first, of, of, of this budget year. The hardest thing to track is legal, because we don't always know anything that has to do with the WPCA. Anything related to the selectmen's office, the board of selectmen, our work. If there's any use of legal related to the WPCA, it comes under our budget.
So just a question on that, Andrea, or I'm not sure who it should be directed to. Last month, we had, there was, I think it was last month, you brought up, there was a twenty thousand dollar outstanding legal fee. And should we pay it out of the general fund or roll it into the seventeen point one? What was the decision on that?
That that decision hasn't been made yet. We have enough money to, to start covering that, but the conversation was clean water funds could carry that in the design phase of the project. So we're waiting for some guidance from the Clean Water Fund on how to do that.
So in general, do you know how much we have spent on legal on the sewer project?
I believe pretty much all of our legal this year has been spent related to that. So it was roughly around ten thousand dollars.
And in twenty twenty, in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, maybe we can get, you can get that for the next meeting?
I can get whatever money, yeah, any budget-related things.
Or send that out to the rest of us, and and then I'd be curious as to what is decided with the twenty thousand dollar outstanding legal?
Right.
That's, that's, that's with our bond attorney, is that correct? Andrea? Yeah, so that, those are usually rolled into the note. It's like when you have closing costs with an attorney.
So that's thirty thousand dollars so far in legal for this project?
Oh, we spent far more than that.
Oh, far, yes, we have spent more than that.
And that will all be rolled into the note?
So Mary, when you asked me.
You're mixing up, so the, the twenty thousand dollars that is for the bond would, would usually is rolled into the note, because it's his fee is, is creating, is, 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 what is creating that bond. All right, everything else has been covered by the general fund of the town. And will not be rolled into anything. It's paid out of the general fund.
Thank you for clarifying. You had, I think you had.
So I have a question for you, Mary, because I'm not clear. So Mary, I do have a question for you. We have been having legal fees related to the last ten to twelve years on this project. At one point, we had an attorney attend every meeting, and we're like, well, let's not do that, it's too expensive. So I could go back right, I mean, I, I are you asking me to go back from, like, any time a document goes through the town, it gets reviewed by legal, so I'm not really clear on how to answer your question. What is it that you're asking me to provide?
I guess what, what I was looking for is what has been spent to date on legal for the sewer project? Whether it's rolled into the, and then the distinction between what is being rolled into the seventeen point one, meaning back to the Soundview homeowners, versus what portion of legal expenses is being picked up by, by the general tax base?
Okay, I think I heard something.
What, what are you going to date? You're going from nineteen eighty-eight till now? But, but you, you have to say a date. Because we get, we get through this, is, is, we, we need, and again, I, I'm gonna go, and Jim's on the phone. And, and we need to, we, we need to put a line, say, say, I want to know what's been spent from this date to this date.
From two thousand fifteen, when this project.
So Mary, the town only carries invoices for three years per statute. So it's a, it's a kind, I mean, I, I can go back as far, I can do it while I was treasurer, but I can go back as far, I will try to honor that, but.
Andrea, why don't we just put, why don't we just put a request into Anita? To supply, Mary, that, we're volunteers here. We have, we have professionals that, that should be able to go back to two thousand fifteen and create, but I have another question. What is considered, what is considered legal for this project versus legal for the WPCA to function? We're responsible to, to adhere to state law, so getting an IMA agreement with New London, is that, is, is that fee to the project, or is it part of our duty as, as a WPCA to go out and get that agreement? I think the most relevant information is how much legal is going to be rolled into the note? Because that's what affects Soundview. What's, what's been spent in, in legal is, is, could, could all be viewed as a function of us functioning as a group, and not necessarily on the project. So please define, we should define what you really want to go back ten years to find out how much money was, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put Lord's bills in with the project. He was here just to attend meetings.
I agree.
Right, so I, then you don't know where, you know, we spent money on legal for other things beside the project. It's not categorized anywhere except the last three years where they, I guess, have maintained the invoices. Is that correct, Andrea?
Yeah. Can we ask the purpose of, of the question? That might help.
To clarify how much is legal and spent that will be rolled over to Soundview.
Okay, that's easier. That's an easier question. Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure, I would very happy to do that. I'll do that for the next meeting. This is great. I love having questions. Any other questions? All right, so please accept that report as presented.
Thank you, Andrea. All right, the, the chairman's report. So CSA update. We're getting closer. The town attorney and at least one, if not both attorneys representing the beach associations are meeting on August eighteenth to review all the comments and hopefully finalize the CSA agreement for signature. They've been forwarding comments from people that have responded. They've incorporated them, and I don't think we're far apart. I just think that they have to do their due diligence and represent the beach associations versus the town. But I believe that there'll be an agreement, a rough, an agreement to, to finalize that agreement on August nineteenth. Sewer project status, basically MBA has moved their bid to August nineteenth. So we'll know then, their numbers won't affect our numbers at all. It is an internal project, so it's not gonna matter. All I'm sure is, has committed to going out to bid. I don't have their schedule, but everything was authorized at a board of governors meeting last week. They are going to follow the DEP milestones and put their job out to bid before September thirtieth. Referendum status, Board of Selectmen have decided to move the referendum back several weeks. I don't even have the actual dates in writing, but it's basically two weeks. I believe my town meeting has changed to the nineteenth. Maybe, maybe later. I don't, I, I, I need a, a written thing telling me these dates. But part of their reasoning is that they wanted to know Miami Beach's results prior to my giving my presentation. And that was the presentation, I mean, the informational meeting. So I'm going to give an informational meeting, and the informational meeting, I said I would also review with you. I gave it to the Board of Selectmen last Monday. I will now present what I presented to them, as well as go through some of the questions that were asked that I will be hopefully consolidating and summarizing, but the raw answers will be online. So let me go to the presentation.
Could you please provide me with the questions you'd like me?
Sorry. So if you, oh, let's see, what did they tell me to do here? Yeah, where is that? Oh, there it is. All right, so this is the title sheet, securing O-line's future. WPCA sewer system referendum proposal presented by the O-line WPCA. The overview is why the sewer project matters, existing funding status, why it increases necessary, economic, environmental, public health impact, what seventeen point one million will achieve. Benefits to the community. It protects groundwater in Long Island Sound, it increases property values, enables homeowners to improve their property without worrying about septic, septic system constraints, and it reduces public health risk. I could probably also put on there, it conforms to DEP administrative order, but those are the benefits. Current system challenges. Aging septic systems in the shoreline neighborhoods, environmental risks to the Long Island Sound, rising groundwater contamination concerns, regulatory compliance requirements from DEP. I've been asked to revise this graph to make it a little more probably easier to understand, a little more informational, but the blue is the original. That was nine and a half million dollars. We're asking for additional funding, which is the red of seven point six million dollars, for a total of seventeen point one million dollars. And the purple would be eight point five five million, which is fifty percent of the of the eight, of the seventeen point one million dollars. I included this link, I'll, I'll include this as a, as an actual paper. But this is, Fussin' O'Neill sent this to us, to me, unedited. It is their summary of the projects. And if you look at Soundview, the funding portion of it is eight million five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, after they've included all their expenses and, and items over here, such as contingency, internal escalation, legal and admin, eligible engineering. All those fees are included and/or some are. I don't know what this one is here, that's zeroed, legal and admin. So that's, so they, they came up with eight point five five four million dollars. And I, I included this in there because because this is the, the one that I have developed and shown since June first of this year. And I came out with eight million five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So there's a difference between the two of about twenty-one thousand dollars, between the two over seventeen point one million dollars. So I'm sure Fussin' O'Neill has included things that I may not have, like interim financing. But in general, the not being financed is going to be about eight point five five million dollars, as I had indicated earlier. And if you divide that by two, if you do a yearly payment at two percent, the payment is five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-one cents. You divide that by two hundred and sixty-nine EDUs, you come up with nineteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents per year, per EDU for twenty years. Um.
Can I point out something or should I?
If it deals with this, this, you might as well point it out, yeah.
Okay, first of all, when you look at Fussin' O'Neil, so we have a cap of 15 million, right, on the forgivable loan. It's capped.
There's a cap of 15 million, yes.
Right, okay. They're told to hear, it's so tiny. It exceeds that amount, it's 15,186,125.
Okay.
Okay, so that's not going to mean that what we're going to get are 15 million.
We're going to get 29.7% of our, I, of, of 15 million dollars, I would, if we're going to use all of the 15 million dollars, we're going to get 29.7% of that.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up because um, Fussin' O'Neil's sheet, it says 25%. And I thought clean water, I have not clean water funds, but um, the forgivable loan deep has consistently said they would finance 15 million or 25% of the project.
25%.
Of the project.
Of the project. Up to 15 million.
Yes, not 29.7 for us. They said 25% of the project.
25% of the whole, so. Okay. I've explained this probably last three meetings. The way the DEP has, has structured these loans is that they are going to break that 15 million dollars based on percentages in the CSA. So you guys question why we're paying 29.7%? Um, I've explained that.
Okay.
It's part of the 270 EDUs over the total EDUs. When the loan, when the, when the construction is done, the DEP is going to take the percentages in the CSA and roll whatever is in that loan or, or whatever is remaining on that note into each individual infrastructure. So five notes, four individual WPCAs and the shared infrastructure note will become four notes. Our internal infrastructure and 29.7% of whatever is left. We will get 29.7% of that 15 million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just saying that in reference to this sheet, this paper, Fussin' O'Neil has it as 25% across the board.
Then they're wrong.
Okay, I'm just saying since you're referencing this, so far there's two errors here.
I didn't, I didn't reference it.
You're looking up on the board.
I, I showed it as, as a check to my numbers. I'm not saying they're correct. I'm saying, I'm saying we're both correct. Two people with two different methods have come within 21 million, uh, 21,000 dollars out of a 17.1 million dollar project.
Okay, thank you. I'm just pointing out what's on this paper. From Fussin' O'Neil.
All right, so is your suggestion that I not show that?
No, I'm suggesting that there can only be one answer.
I have answered, Mary, I have answered you. I've told you the structure of the note.
Okay, thank you, thank you Steve.
You're welcome.
All right, right about it. I'm asking because it's on the paper that you presented to the selectmen on Monday.
All right, so I, I appreciate that comment. I, if it causes confusion, I think I'll take it out of my presentation.
Can I, can I just divest myself right, right now? Is there any reason why we don't have a, a printed copy in front of us?
Because I do it on computer?
Now, can you, can you pulse the town, town of Old Line to print it?
It's, it's on, it's online.
Yeah, and then I have to print it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not online. The, your presentation was not online. The last presentation was 22.
It, it's online. I saw it today, Dennis.
Is it at the WPCA site? No, it's on the board of selectmen.
Yeah, it's on the Board of Selectmen site. Um, Dennis, could you go to the town hall? Maybe Michelle or Katie could print you a copy.
You, you, you're missing the point though.
I'm not, I heard what you said, yeah.
The point is, is we're here and we're looking at a screen instead of a piece of paper.
Okay.
Just, just one last comment on this. On the other thing here, um, for Sound View area B has zero for legal, but we just said there's expect, we're expecting $50,000 for council.
Uh, well, I think 20 has been spent.
Right.
I would not be surprised if it's 40, maybe 50, I don't know.
At selectmen's meeting, you said 50 was your expectation.
Okay.
Hmm.
All right.
Just trying to help you get these numbers.
So uh, that, that 50 is rolled into the 17.1 million dollars.
Uh, there?
On mine.
Yeah, that's paper.
Maybe we should show a pie chart where we have the four WPCAs and show our percent. Maybe that would help. Cause as I'm listening to this conversation, it's confusing when you see a percentage without seeing the bigger piece. Would that help, do you think?
I'm trying to find 50,000 on here.
So Mary, would, would it help if we had a pie chart? And
No, no, I do so.
Well, that's where we could show where the 29.7% comes from. And it would show the percentage the other uh, WPCAs will be responsible for, per the CSA. And then
Uh, in my opinion, it doesn't matter.
That wouldn't help.
Somebody wants to do that.
Well, it's a side, the 29.7 has been, since I've joined the committee, it's been there forever. That's the Sound View portion. I, I, I guess, again, I'm, I'm going to raise a comment and hopefully Jim as a selectman will get this, um. On a 17 million dollar project, it's crazy to ar- argue over 20,000 dollars. It's going to go up and down. I, I don't know why we waste time on this. I mean, it's going to go, i- it's insignificant. On, on, on a 17, on this sizable project, we're going to have a variance like that. I've been in business forever. Again, if we could get it within 100,000 dollars, that's great. Again, I think there's been way too much time spent arguing over pennies and, and, and going over cents. I, i- i- are we in the right direction?
And, and I guess to also note, the 29.7% is only of the shared infrastructure.
Correct.
So that's, you know, just one line item compared to the cost for the sewer system installation.
There's a 5% contingency. There's almost, um, on the shared infrastructure, there's almost a million dollar contingency. On our, on our, so that's 300, uh, basically 300,000 dollars. Um, on our internal, there's a contingency of 427,600 dollars. And we're talking about 20,000 dollars.
Well, 50,000 dollars, right?
No, no, I've already, we've already accounted for the 20. We've actually already accounted for the 50, but we, we, when we came up with 17, it was 17.04 something, I think. And we rounded it to 17.1 million as a request to include the 50,000 dollars. But it, it's not shown here because it was done after the, the uh, it was done during the vote, actually, but uh, the contingency on, on, on a project, the, a 400,000 dollar contingency on this project is a lot of money because there's, if, you don't just get change orders because you want that. There has to be a change in conditions from what was in, on the drawings. And there's nothing in that road that's actually going to, to elicit that. I don't believe, if there is, it's not going to be much. Um, that, that's, I mean, that's all I can say based on my 40 years of experience in this, in this business. Um, there is not, as well as the changes that we're making to encapsulate the, the pipe where we're expecting um, hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings. I do not believe that we will even spend 17.1 million. But they're in there just in case, so.
When you talk about the savings for the changes that DEP has allowed in regard to um, wells, right? I can see that benefiting Miami Beach.
Mm-hmm.
But our bid is already been out there.
We're going to change.
You're going to change the bid?
No, we're going to change, we're going to write it, we're going to request the contractor to provide a credit for not doing that work and using the new method that, that's been approved.
You think he's going to agree with that? I'm just asking, is that how, how things work?
He has to.
Oh, he is.
It would be called, it would be called, if he doesn't agree to it, it would be called a field directed change order. They would have to perform it and they would have to go to arbitration uh, to determine a fair price or what. I've never seen a contractor go that direction because uh, they usually will negotiate a fair, reasonable price for the savings that they're going to make and not get hurt by the change order. And it's usually accepted by the engineer. Um, but there, in the contract that we have, which is probably 500 pages long, there's a whole section that you can read about how this would work. And they, the project doesn't stop because you can't agree on, on what a change order is worth. You just get directed by the engineer to do it and they have the right per contract to do that. And then you fight over the price later. So expenses not included in the assessment fees. Connection charges to New London. Uh, 712,819,71 cents financed at 2.625% over 20 years is equal to 169,53 cents per year per EDU. Connection charges to East Line, 272,000 uh, 10 dollars and 49 cents financed at 2% over 20 years equals 61 dollars and 13 cents per year per EDU. Total connection chargers per EDU per year, 230 dollars and 66 cents. Uh, we decided to, to include those connection charges based on this document called Methods of Capital Cost Recovery on Water Pollution Control Projects, stated January 1997. I went on the DEP website to look for new and improved uh, Methods of Capital Cost Recovery on Water Pollution Control Projects. And their latest and greatest is January 1997. So this is the latest guide. In here, it says a connection charge referenced in CSG 7255 may be levied at the time of connection with this sewer internally in addition to the benefit assessment. Connection charges, they basically, two forms. The first, which exists while the debt for the sewer is still active, generally covers the municipal cost of processing a permit to connect, including the inspection of the connection. The second, which is usually occurs after the capital debt for the sewer has been paid off, covers both permit processing costs and lump sum payment in lieu of a benefit assessment. In the latter case, the funds collected in lieu of the benefit assessment are available for use any capital costs within the existing or proposed municipal sewage system. So this is a guide by the Department of Environmental Protection because it's that old. Um, but it, it tells what, what uh, is, you know, power assessments determined. You know, uh, front footage, lot size, property value, flow proportion, general taxation. Um, you know, it gives information on which towns do fixed charges. Most, most do a, a combination of different methods to figure out what their formulas are going to be. But in all cases, it's the WPCA that's done that. Um, we've done uh, this year, so uh, is that federal or state? This is state. It's a state's connected DEP. You just look up on DEP website, Methods of Capital Cost Recovery. User fees per EDU. User fees will be comprised of all costs necessary to properly operate and maintain the system and will be split between internal infrastructure, 100%, and shared infrastructure, 29.7%. Fees will include electricity, bioxide purchase, land rental, taxes, grounds maintenance, annual inspections, insurance, third-party O and M company, and any other incidentals. From the previous slide, 230 dollars and 66 cents will be for connection fees to East Line in New London. Another 18,034 cents per EDU will be set aside for a maintenance fund per the New London IMA. User fees per EDU continued at 300 gallons per day for 12 weeks and 150 gallons per day for 40 weeks. New London usage fees 168 dollars per year. At an estimated yearly flow of 6,000, uh, 6,495,000 for all of Old Line, anticipated usage costs is 25,614 dollars. Um, I can show everyone the East Line IMA. This calculation came right from them. Uh, O-line WPCA is responsible 29.7% or 7,607 dollars uh, or 28 dollars and 18 cents per year. Uh, O-line WPC will also be responsible for, for 0.6534% 29.7% of 2.2% of the East Line and 0.5% of New London capital improvements. This is equal to 2420 and 1851 respectively, per 1 million dollars, which will most likely be financed over 20 years at 2%. Um, East Line is going, if East Line upgrades, they're most likely going to finance it through CWF funding. If New London does, they will also do the same. It's going to be a 20-year at 2%, um, unless that percent goes up. But it has been 2% for years, um, and it hasn't gone up, so uh, minimum expected, minimum expected user fees is 382,52 cents plus the other incidentals. Now, um, the DEP has estimated our user fees and they will be forwarding that to me. And they came up with, I think, 430 dollars uh, per EDU. I'd like to look at it and see it, but they marked out insurance. I don't know what insurance is going to be. I, I mean, I don't know what insurance is going to be. I don't know what the electric bill is going to be. I don't know any of that, but as I said before, and I think it was misinterpreted, Point of Woods spends 520 dollars per year per EDU. Their system is very similar to ours. They have bioxide. They have actually two pump stations. I thought they had four. Someone said they had two. Um, uh, whether they have users, lots of users, or very few users, they have 450 users, um. Their total cost divided by 450 is 520 dollars per year.
Does that include their connection fees, their contractual fees?
They don't have any.
They don't have any, so it's just, that's their true user cost without connection fees.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, I guess.
Okay, so if you're estimating their user fee is 4, 500 dollars, did you just say?
That's what they said.
Without connection, without the contractual fees. So.
Question.
Yeah.
So in 20 years, that like 200 and something dollars no longer be part of that?
Correct.
User fee?
Correct.
All time. It's a long time.
Expenses paid out of O-line general fund and not being passed on to end users. Uh, the one-time buy-in deposit into the IMA with New London, that was 10,000 dollars. That's, that was uh, paid for by general fund money. Reimbursement to the B, Beach Associations, WPCAs for their cost to develop IMA with East Line, that was repaid 66,609 dollars, which was which was equal to twenty nine point seven percent of the total cost of that. Reimbursement for C W F uncovered expenses to the B A W P Cs. Uh, that was approved last year, last fiscal year by this W P C A of thirty nine thousand two hundred forty five dollars. And again, that's twenty nine point seven percent of those costs. All legal fees in developing the I M As and C S As, assessors' reports, special testing, et cetera. All those have come out of our general fund, um and they will not be being passed on to end users. Uh, put this slide in there because I think there's a lot of confusion about uh Rich Rendagast's statement in the day uh back in, I guess, that's supposed to be twenty twenty one, um. But I asked all the beach associations to give me what they've spent uh on this project. Um, the shared infrastructure was one million ninety one thousand. Um rounding these numbers off, you can read them. Old Line Shores was six hundred sixty six. Miami Beach was six hundred ninety six. Old not Old Line Colony, Old Colony was five hundred seventy one and Old Line was six hundred fifteen. Um out of pocket expenses and that's estimated. Um, I did that by dividing what we've spent um in in uh what we reimburse divide by uh point two nine seven percent uh comes up with four hundred thousand dollars or so. So the total was four hundred, four million forty seven thousand six hundred thirty dollars, uh which is close to four point one million. Um, so those, so when Rich made that statement, these are the numbers he was referring to. That had certainly nothing to do with the O Line W P C A or the town of O Line spending four point one million dollars. Um, you know, over the past ten years, in order to spend that, our budget would have had to been four hundred thousand dollars a year. And we certainly haven't had that type of budget.
So I think everybody understood it was all the beach associations. We're just trying to pare down of the four point one million. What portion of that would Soundview and Area B be responsible for? Or if not, what portion of that was paid by the town? So if it's one million, it's twenty nine percent of that, thirty percent would be three hundred thousand plus uh the six hundred and fifteen plus thirty percent, let's say, of the four hundred and six.
Uh, no, 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 not.
Okay.
Out of pocket was already paid for.
Okay.
We've already paid for that on the general fund.
Out of the general fund. And the top shared infrastructure, that one point nine one million ninety one thousand would, Soundview would have to pay about thirty thousand of that, or or whatever, thirty percent of it, huh?
About three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. I don't see that in your spreadsheet, and that's why I'm asking.
Oh, because my spreadsheet includes all of that under engineering and design. The money, the money being spent, the money being spent is just, that's design. That was for design of that system.
Okay. Thank you for that, so because the the, what you told me before under um engineering, that's payable to um Woodward and Current, right? Not to Noe or anybody else, it's just Woodward and Current.
No. Did. The internal infrastructure, which is anything gravity in Soundview and Area B, is Woodward and Current.
Right.
We pay a hundred percent of that.
Right.
Less less the the matching funds.
That's what this engineering is eight fifty six is, goes to Woodward and Current.
That eight fifty six is for contracted administration.
To Woodward and Current.
To Woodward and Current. The, the engineering and design in the infrastructure.
One point six million.
One point six million.
Goes to Pasanonia.
Goes to Pasanonia.
And somewhere there's accounting of what other expenses have incurred. Wh- which Old Colony is managing, but will be portioned back to us.
There's. This is from the state, repeat? It has pretty much every, everything that you can.
Oh, good.
Uh, see, it's a, it's a current accounting of any money being spent. This is what they gave me. This is all I'm shores, internal infrastructure. I'm not gonna give you a copy of that, I won't give you a copy of that. I won't give you a copy of that, they're really not mine to give. Those are all internal infrastructures for them. Um. I will give you a copy of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? How we get, for a person make copies, no, no one?
I'll just send them out via email. People might want some. Just ask.
Thank you.
Steve, are you sharing the screen? If you're sharing your screen, it could actually be tender recorded. I didn't, I don't.
Uh, yeah, I'm uh.
You're sharing your screen right now, but it's not.
Mark, okay, I just need to see a copy of thing.
So that's, that's how those numbers were developed on the last sheet. Oh.
It's not on my screen.
It's not?
No.
Uh, why the increase is necessary? Inflation impact, forty to fifty percent rise in construction materials costs from pre-COVID to post-COVID. The original estimates were developed by the engineering groups over a decade ago and assumed a steady two percent inflation rate and did not anticipate a period of hyperinflation. Who pays for this project? Initially, the project is being funded through D E P using C W F funds. This is a revolving program which funds are lent out for construction and then repaid by the users in most cases. The W P C A will assess each property owner based upon the E D U system that was developed by its governing W P C A. Each property owner has the right to pay their loan back over twenty years at two percent interest. It is the intent of O Line W P C A to have the end users pay for the cost of this project. O Line W P C A is requesting higher spending authority, though the amount being financed is still under the original referendum amount of nine and a half million dollars due to state matching funds. Um. A property owner could pay, I guess, the the money upfront, the, where their e- assessment is, they could take it out and pay it if they'd want, um, but they have the right to pay it out at two percent, finance it on two percent twenty years. What happens if it doesn't pass? Well, we have risk of E P A D E P fines most likely to be issued with a consent order from D E P instructing sewers to be installed. We will most likely lose the twenty five percent forgivable loan portion. Um, delays will increase the costs over time and continued environmental and property risk. Next steps, now these dates have changed, um. But the dates have changed, but I've already presented to the B O S. I believe I'm gonna have to go back to the B O S, maybe, um. It goes to the Board of Finance for a vote. Um, there's an informal meeting uh where it's going to be this presentation. There's a town meeting in which the town will vote to either go to referendum or not go to referendum. And then there's the referendum vote. The referendum vote uh will be not at the center school, be at the middle school. It'll be between the hours of twelve noon and eight P M, but I don't know the date yet. Absentee ballots will be made available, so uh. Those are the next steps. And in conclusion, uh a seventeen point six million dollar investment now secures seventeen point one million dollars in infrastructure. Uh, it will protect our environment, health, and property values and long term savings for Soundview and Area B residents. And then there's question and answers. And since uh the Board of Selectmen offered to have questions after the presentation, um. I have answered them, they've been posted, but I'll go through through the questions that were asked, try to answer them. Um, I'm only here six months, why, so why do I have to pay this amount of money uh that the year round people do, shouldn't that be broken down? Um, and I replied, there are two aspects to the cost, there's assessment fees and there are user fees. The assessment is based on E D U, um, which we have a formula to figure out uh what your assessment will be. Um, and it's a benefit assessment, it's it's based on, um, basically, the amount of money that uh your house increases because sewer goes through it. Um, and then there are user fees, which will be based on uh usage. Um, the first two years, it will be based uh on our E D U uh because we need data, uh we might be able to uh move that up. But after two years, it will be solely based on usage. Um, someone said, I think the numbers uh need to be definitely, need to be definitely before down. I probably means definitely, definitely known, maybe, before we have a referendum on anything. Um, I replied that the town of O Line held a referendum when the only available numbers were estimates. Today, we have every number that will be included in Soundview and Area B costs. Internal infrastructure plus shared infrastructure bids have been received. A distraction to moving forward is the question of whether Miami Beach and Old Line Shores will get responsive bids. And if they don't, it would affect O Line's percentage of the shared cost, thus raising the cost for E D U. W P C A response is that the figures provided that lead to a request of a total expenditure of seventeen point one million dollars with eight point five five million being financed and eight point five being granted. Uh, I'm sorry, that's incorrect, it's not eight points, being financed and being granted. Is that if any other entity currently expected to be in the shared infrastructure does not participate, we would need to go back out to referendum as there would not be enough spending authority. So if Miami Beach or Old Line Shores doesn't come in, our percentage does rise and we don't have enough money to do the project, I'd have to go back out to referendum again. It's, I mean, that's, we're not asking, we're we're, this this guarantees, the referendum guarantees that all four members will be in it. Because if they're not, we don't have enough money in our budget to do the project. Where's the oversight of the W C A, where's that plan? Uh, I believe this process is part of the oversight of the W P C A. We hold regular meetings, and which the first selectman is usually present. We publish minutes to all our meetings and present to the B O S in public when requested or when we believe it is necessary. This process has been ongoing for over a decade. And while some may not like the direction sewers, and what it was the W P C A's last resort after presenting alternate waste disposal ideas that were not accepted by the D E P. The plan is to follow D E P direction until otherwise requested by town leadership. How is the money managed basically for the W P C A? The W P C A requests a budget each year and presents those requests to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. From the budget, we spend funds for different lineups such as comedy, our septic tank pumping, inspection software, testing, attorney's fees, et cetera. The budget and order of funds spent are available in the town report each year. Please include the other expenses that each household would pay. I'm not quite sure exactly what you are requesting, but I'll give a shot. The household will have to pay user fees, which I itemized the best I could in my presentation. The D P has offered to provide me their estimate for user fees, which was around four hundred and fifty dollars. I am awaiting their email, but that was conveyed to me verbally. In addition, I offered the figure of five hundred and twenty dollars per year for Point of Woods household expenses. I believe it's safe to say that Soundview and Area B residents will pay approximately five hundred dollars per year for user fees, though this could be, thi- this could vary based on usage. Other costs associated with hooking in to sewers is hiring a contractor to install the lateral from the household property line to the house and then abandoning the existing septic system. I have spoken to several contractors that indicate an average home in Soundview and Area B would be around four to five thousand dollars. Those are the only other costs besides the assessment that I can think of. We have to think about inflation, we have to think about hyperinflation because we have tariffs to deal with now in a lot of, I know, a lot of materials come from Canada. What could these additional costs be? There's contingency built into the budget itself to account unknowns. This question is requesting, I predict what pricing will be in three months' time. If I could do that, it would be a commodities trader. I can't tell you what, if any, additional costs will be, but I can tell the, tell you with a high degree of confidence that we have enough in the budget to address the above situation if necessary. Uh, the other thing I'm not supposed to talk about is why we can't have separate systems. Most of the systems in Soundview are non-conform, meaning they do not comply with current health department septic standards for one reason or another. I've never told anyone they can't talk about having a separate system. What I do try to stress is that the O Line W P C A proposed several alternate systems to sewers and the D E P did not accept them. After discussion with our engineers, it became clear that the only system the D E P would accept was sewers. We discussed fighting that outcome, but felt in the long run, much money would be spent fighting a system that we would most likely end up installing. The presentation states, for example, three hundred gallons, twelve weeks, and the amount calculated was three hundred and eighty two dollars and fifty two cents. But there were exclusions, and I don't know what the exclusions are, so how much could those exclusions be? I don't believe the presentation excluded clo- costs. I believe the presenter, me, stated that those costs could be so varied that I did not want to go on record, quoting something that could vary any large degree from actual cost, then being accused of misleading the public. I offer Point of Woods user fee as a good approximation of what ours will be since they have a bioxide system, several pump stations, and their user fees per household. I do not think that because they have four hundred and fifty homes and and combined, we have nine hundred and nine homes uh will vary the cost per household by much, as I think Point of Woods is a valid representative sample. The other thing is it's one point one five eight billion dollars was already spent from the general funds. And so we are not obligated as people who are expecting sewers to pay for that, correct? Thus far, the O Line W P C A has financed six hundred and fifteen thousand and two hundred dollars from C W F funds and twenty nine, at at twenty nine point seven percent, oh, and twenty nine point seven percent of one point nine one million, one point zero nine one million, which is derived from our internal infrastructure, together totaling nine hundred thirty nine thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and are paid back at two percent over twenty years. Once the sewers are installed, these design notes will be incorporated into construction notes that O Line would be re- responsible in the eight point five million, five five million being financed. And the other expenditures by the O Line W P C A have come from the general fund, which is funded by the taxpayers at O Line. What was calculated for, you know, sewer exploration? Um, why were other systems explored? I, it's probably said, why weren't other systems explored? But um, the questions, the questions here were give, were provided to me by a transcript from the Board of Selectmen. So I'm just, I I didn't touch the questions, I just wrote my answers underneath. The O Line W P C A spent funds from its general fund budget that looked into other alternatives besides sewers. We propose, we propose various single septic systems as well as a community leaching field design that would have been located at the abandoned cherry stones. The D E P did not accept any proposal that we presented and indicated that they believed sewers were the only long term, least expensive solution. Perhaps the O Line W P C A should have fought back, but at the time, sewers were in favor of town leadership and we were requested to investigate installation of sewers. Alternate systems explored with all that one million dollars that was spent. I did hear Mister Potter give a presentation and no- nothing was done after it, why not? The O Line W P C A is under an administrative order by the D E P to continue along the path of installing sewers. I also listened to Mister Potter and he admitted it was probably too late in the game to propose alternates besides sewers and that O Line W P C A should have fought more diligently against the D E P stance. I'm not sure what the one million dollar figure refers to unless it is our share of sewer design. The shared infrastructure is over a million dollars. How much of that is going to be paid by W P C of O Line or the residents in? How much of that is going to be paid by WPCA of O'Line or the residents and then other out-of-pocket costs? The O'Line WPCA is responsible through, through the CSA to pay twenty-nine point seven percent of the final cost after grants forgivable loans. As of today, I do not know any outstanding out-of-pocket costs that would be levied on end users. Is that money going to be divided among us in the beaches? If that money is referring to funding for the shared infrastructure, yes. Old Colony Beach Club is the administrator and guarantor of the shared infrastructure loan. While they will administer the loan, the DEP will fold each member's percent based on CSA. Of the outstanding loan for shared infrastructure into each individual WPCA's internal infrastructure loan. Is that amount that was spent calculated in the total cost of the residents? Yes, all outstanding costs have been included in all calculations that have been presented by the O'Line WPCA. In addition, the per EDU cost includes financing at two percent over twenty years. I concerned about the capacity in London, I did see the article also about the expansion that East Line is proposing. And the expansion costs were fifty million or so. What's that going to cost us in the future and is the system going to accommodate our sewage? The DEP license to New London affords New London an additional three hundred gallons of capacity once O'Line and the other PAs hook in. This was specifically done to ensure that London would maintain capacity for O'Line and the beach associations. While the request was made, nothing has ever been dis- even been discussed by New London. And even if it were to be decided to increase capacity, it wouldn't happen for at least another decade. By the time studies, permitting, plans, and construction was undertaken. That being said, I calculated forty-two point seven one. Dollars per million dollars per EDU financed at two percent over twenty years. So if it's fifty million, I guess that's two thousand dollars or twenty-two hundred dollars and change. Uh, financed over twenty years or two percent. I'm concerned about the referendum when the status of other bids are not in yet, and I do not know what the bottom line is for my property. I do have a lot that has nothing on it and is included with two other lots, and I want to know if it is going to be billable as a building lot or not. The status of all bids that will affect the WPCA referendum requests are in. We know them and have based our calculations on them. Miami Beach and All Line Shores numbers will not affect our numbers. I do not know the property of which you refer, but the EDU formula assesses any empty lot that would be deemed buildable after sewers, ten thousand square feet and above. How are empty lots been clarified at WPCA? Are the empty lots are or buildable lots? The O'Line WPCA has categorized any buildable lot, i.e. ten thousand square feet and above, as an assessable lot. Since once sewers go past, they'll be eligible to be built on according to our zoning. Is there a possibility you might be able to put out a list for each residence so that we know what our EDU calculations are? Could it be put on our website? We will place the formula sheet that Mary Daly and Dennis Maluso developed. And upon which the entire O'Line WPCA voted on the website. The twenty-nine point seven percent of the Sound View people are responsible for is a concern of mine. If there's four entities, why? I think we are a relatively smaller group paying twenty-nine percent. It's like, you know, almost a third. I just don't know where that number comes from, and I'm concerned that we are paying more than our fair share. Again, it wasn't clear to me in my presentation why. I know we are paying twenty-nine percent, but I just don't know why. I didn't want this referendum uh. Presentation to go into uh a lot of the history of, of how. You, you, we've answered this question, but uh, you know, maybe, maybe I will uh include something. But this is the answer, the twenty-nine point seven percent represents two hundred and seventy EDUs, the number of EDUs in Sound View. Divided by the total number, uh, nine hundred and ninety to use in the entire shared system. The EDUs were determined by the engineering firms that developed the original EIE studies. Since then, each ownership percentage has been codified in the CSA document that was signed by the BAs, O'Line WPCA, and the Town of Old Line. When I look at these numbers, it says thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, as we heard today. I calculated out to three to eight thousand with interest. Anyway, the thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, you are asking about Old Colony, which is very, very similar in the number of houses. And empty lots were almost identical, their EDU on here is thirty-eight. So I asked how we are six thousand dollars more per EDU than Old Colony to start with. Uh, if you take nineteen hundred and thirty-six dollars and multiply it by twenty, you come up with thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So I do not know where the thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollar figure came from. It certainly was not a number in the presentation. Old Colony has almost no mixed use or commercial property to account for versus Sound View. I do not know what the thirty-eight and six thousand uh dollar figures are coming from. As I did not perform a comparison between Old Colony and Sound View. If we have two hundred and seventy EDUs, how can we justify that some properties are three EDUs and yet seventy percent of our homes are only one EDU? Per the formula that Mary Daly and Dennis Maluso developed, these properties justify three EDUs based on the mathematics of the formula. When I count, and I know the EDU structure, I count a hundred and eighteen out of a hundred and ninety of our properties will pay one EDU. The rest, almost seventy properties, will pay considerably more, up to three EDUs. That's correct, it's based upon the formula developed by Mary Daly and Dennis Maluso. Mary and Dennis were instrumental in reformulating Frank Chan's formula, which tried to level costs between the properties. Because they felt Frank's formula was too difficult to understand and also believed that someone with skin in the game. Should be the developer of a truly fair system to allocate costs. I do question and would like clarification on why the Sound View contingency was reduced to five percent. When you look at Fuss and O'Neill's numbers and you calculate it out, most of them. The other beaches, the private beach associations, range from fourteen point two seven percent to over sixty percent for each of them. I'm not exactly sure the contingency in which you refer. There is no line item in our bid for contingency. What you may be referring to is contingency that is assigned at the beginning of the process. That is usually steadily reduced as more and more unknowns become knowns. The original contingency had to include escalation, inflation, and a number of other items that would have to be accounted for during the process. They known, the unknowns in this project are now reduced to conditions encountered that were not indicated on the plans that result in a change order. The remainings have been accounted for at bid time, meaning we know all, we know the cost, it's been bid, that's the number. Um, there is no, uh, that's the number, so. The unknowns are gone, and the only thing remaining is the unknowns in the ground. So those are the questions that uh, uh, were asked after the meeting, after my presentation. They've been posted on the website. And uh, now I open it up to discussion. Between uh members here, yes.
Somebody made a, one of the comments, the questions, somebody made a comment about one over a billion dollars.
Yeah.
We should shoot that down fast, because that doesn't need to get, I mean, I don't know where that came from.
Or, I, I think they probably meant a million. Well, but, I mean, yeah, I, I, I'm not going to correct your questions.
I just, I'm just, get ready for it, because it could get into a paper or. And again, I guess the, the other thing that I see is. That I can't overemphasize enough is that with. The extra. Twenty-five percent, we're still under the original referendum. All said and done, and that's very important. And I don't think that, I think people need to understand that.
Should I have a, a slide? Yeah, a more, a better slide?
I, 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 I think that would be helpful, that, that, this is what it was, and I think you hit it once, this is what it was.
The graph, the graph should be better.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Anything else? Yeah. Yeah. We can, could probably make that better with a couple of pie charts. That would show that. Relatively. Even the spending authority is, is pretty much a lot more the, the money funding. Dmitri, do you have any, uh?
No, our objection could be if uh, those numbers di- divided between the beaches. Somebody can explain to us, I. I can, I, I cannot understand either why. Sound View has twenty-nine point seven percent and the other beaches have less. This is, uh, nobody can explain that.
Well, I, I, I'll try to explain it. So there were uh EIE studies done for, for each beach association in a lot. Woodward and Curran did our EIE study. They estimated two hundred and seventy EDUs for our system. For our, all the homes, they said, based on what we know, we think it's going to be equivalent to two hundred and seventy equivalent dwelling units. Fuss and O'Neill did Old Colony, Miami Beach, and All Line Shores, and they came out with. Less, obviously, um, All Line Shores, I think, is at twenty, close to twenty-five percent, and the other two are close to twenty percent. And. We use those EDUs. When uh, writing up the CSA. I don't know if anyone remembers this, because it was a while ago. But the beach associations, it didn't even want us to join the CSA. And as a matter of fact, uh, they've expressed that recently to me, that uh. They, they did not want to be partners with the Town of Old Line. That would mean that the Town of Old Line would have to build its own pump station and its own pipe going all the way down.
To East Line and this thing.
Alright, so, so. Maybe, maybe we could have asked our engineers to re- redo their EDUs. But I mean, that seems like a weird thing to ask if they've gone to the state and said, this is how many equivalent dwelling units we think there is. But, I mean. It, it's, if it is high, it's, it's not. Significantly high to where it's, it's, it would never, it would never cost. More at twenty-nine point seven percent than it would to put our own system. That whole, that whole line is, is twenty million dollars.
But nobody can reject us from the uh group of, of uh beaches that needs the sewer. Another thing that uh, Sound View area B and the Sound View Beach area. Uh, gonna, those homeowners will pay more money than the other beaches owners will pay. But here is one thing that we don't consider. Which is, say, three beaches, private beaches, have a security guards, they don't let any stranger to come to the beach. And imagine Sound View Beach allows all members of the. O'Line go for free on the beaches. They can park for free. And uh.
Really park for free?
Sound, if you have a permit to park, you're, you live in O'Line, you don't pay for parkings.
Yeah, you do, yeah, you do.
There you go, you have to park.
They do pay?
Yeah.
Alright, but, but beneficiaries also not only people who live. In the area where the sewer will come. But people who don't, who come to the beach from the O'Line. Uh, using this beach, so there would be very small need for. Town to pay additional money. The difference between cost of a homeowner who's gonna pay for the sewer. To the uh owners of other beaches, this is my point, so.
I do have a comment, um, I heard you again today say that you talked to several. Uh, I don't know, people you talked to regarding what it caused to hook up. But I have, and we all have, written estimates from B and L that it's much higher than that. My estimate, which was provided actually by your vice chair Cory, is eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And Dennis' is even higher.
Call Tom Montano. Tom Montano.
I do know him, yeah. But I'm saying this is.
Well, I'm asking you to get a quote from Tom.
This is what, okay, so actually you got one quote from Tom.
Tom, Tom, Tom has given me a quote, there've been other people that have given quotes.
And other people. Well, this is what we have in writing as a quote.
Okay. Mary, I don't know your property, I don't know where you live, I don't know if it's a standard property.
No, it's very straightforward.
I'm, I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying, for you, for you, I'll put yours in.
No, thank you. I really, thank you anyway, but no. And John, I just want to make a comment back to you because you kind of cut me short. When I talk about fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars and I question it. And that belongs to only two hundred properties in O'Line, yes, it does make a difference to us. I know the whole project is seventeen or sixty or ninety mil, whatever, it's kind of some seventy million, I guess, is estimated for now. But we really do, and it does make a difference to the people in Sound View, two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars, all that adds up. And some people lose their homes over it, so please, don't cut me short again, thank you, please don't, I thank you, I appreciate it.
I didn't think I cut you short, I apologize if I did, I'm sorry.
The people that are, are in mind, I put that we will pay for it.
To, to that extent, um, I do realize that, but. This is the direction the state has requested that we go in. And I don't, I don't quite understand how. Two thousand dollars a year plus user fees, so let's say it's twenty-five hundred dollars a year, is an unacceptable expense. But when a sewer system fails down there, it's forty to sixty thousand dollars upfront. I, I don't understand how, would you rather pay the forty or sixty thousand dollars in a, in a lump sum? Or, or finance thirty-eight thousand dollars at two percent over twenty years?
Some of the tap that in this mention is not forty or sixty thousand dollars to replace the septic system. Just as you went out and you got an estimate from Tom Montana. So there's a range there, okay? But I guess it's the independence or the ownership that, that that would be my decision to do, which is now being taken away from me. So I think that's part of it as well, and I'm sure you understand, because you all have septic systems which you plan to keep, okay? So, and the maintenance on, on this project is significantly higher than three hundred or set, four hundred dollars to pump your system out every seven years.
But he revised to five, but.
Seven now in your.
It's seven in the order, it's five, five state, it's state.
I think you understand what I'm saying.
Well, I do, but I mean, there's two people in Sound View that were, have to leave their property because they have failed septic system.
They do.
And it was sixty thousand dollars.
It's taken fifteen years to come to a decision. There are people in Sound View who know they have to repair their septic systems, and they're sitting on it waiting for a decision right now. They're looking at it going, should I, should I, do I have to go ahead now this year and do this? Whereas there are going to be sewers in two to three years, or are they going to come back in five years?
Well, we're, we're certainly trying to, to answer that question.
That is why right now there's probably problems in Sound View, because it's taken so. That is why right now there's probably problems in Soundview because it's taken so long to do this project. And it conclusion yet, and it won't be until Miami Beach and I feel I feel Olive Shores bids are in.
All right, I mean, we know our numbers. We know our numbers. Uh, seventeen point one million, if Olive Shores or Miami Beach doesn't go forward, we can't go forward.
Right.
Because we've based it on participation of all four entities. So the seventeen million dollars is almost like an insurance policy. You don't have to worry about Miami Beach or Olive Shores, because if they don't do the project, we can't do the project either.
We stand there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone?
Uh, I had I had a question, um, excuse me, I had to go. Um, there was a couple of uh three paragraphs, and it specifically said Mary in my name.
Oh.
I I believe that should be deleted. And you can put it down as the WPCA. Because we have minutes, we have recordings that we strenuously did not feel could have passed, it should have been in draft form and still been worked on, and you elected to um, put it to a vote that night, and and the other members said yes. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a WPCA project, it's not a Dennis and and Mary project. Just like it's not Frank Chan's anymore, that was four years ago.
We actually told you in April, right before they went to and Andrea, Rob McCarthy, and what's his name?
Cory.
Cory, thank you. Voted to pass it. Those are the three who passed it, not me and Dennis. We actually asked you, B and L, to go back and read the current report. That didn't happen.
Right, and right. And the people that voted for it said, what does an assessor's report? You do not want to make you do not want to make a formula that falls into the bounds of an assessor's report to to equitably uh just equally allocate uh expenses and costs to people. You want a formula that equitably allocates expenses to people, and it falls out where where it does. If it goes above the assessment, that's something we'll have to we'll have to deal with. But it would be, I think, much harder to go to court to say, we've tailored our formula so that no one goes above their assessment. What we've done is we've equitably allocated EDUs based on the structure and size of your home. The number of bedrooms and the number of of kitchens.
Basically, yes, basically, except, yes.
And then mixed use we is a different category and commercial is a different category. That is far easier. I I don't know these properties. You got two two bedrooms, you got a bathroom, you got a kitchen, you're one EDU. You got three bedrooms, you're still one EDU. I mean, it's it's we you just take it and and fill in the numbers.
We told you there was errors in calculations. You moved it to a vote. People voted on it, Dennis and I didn't. Why it becomes Mary and Dennis's.
Was it your formula?
So I think ultimately, it's a it's a fair request to have their names taken out.
I'll take it out.
The WPCA.
You should say WPCA because you voted for it.
Yeah, that's fair.
And there was another in one of the slides when when you were talking about um the what if we don't do it? And you may get you may get uh uh the doom and gloom of EPA and deep fines and court orders and consent orders. Uh, let me remind you that no town in the state of Connecticut is ever gone to court and been sued by deep and won. The towns of all won. And that's across the river.
Westbrook and East.
Well, I don't I don't know if Old one.
They did, Dennis Gretzky.
They're installing.
Put it in his, they're not installing sewers, they are doing major repairs to to um, septic systems.
No.
And yes, they are, they're they've already completed fifty percent of of uh some, there's only one town, one section of town, and that's Indian Town that has other problems, plus the shopping centers, and they're addressing.
So, thanks, they're installing, they have installed a a common leaching area for homes that are attached to a sewer system. Now, the sewer doesn't go to New London, doesn't go to a treatment plant, but it's still called a sewer system because it's a it's a effluent collection system.
Just like the lagoons work.
That transported had transported away from the home in the tree, so they have a they have a a they have a sewer system. Now, the reason.
The drainage system as well.
It's a it that's how they treat their sewer system. The sewer system is a is a collection of pipes and manholes that transport sewer effluent from a home to a different location. That's what a sewer is. The the treatment facility is what most people view as the end location of sewer of a sewer system. But in this case, it's a drip system. But regardless of that, the reason they they did that is because DP did studies on the most effective least cost and said they couldn't go to Deepwater and they couldn't go to Clinton and they couldn't go to New London. It was too expensive, and so they settled on that. DP doesn't feel that's the case here. We we walk for that, Tim.
I think Westbrook was under actual consent order, and they have not to date put any sewers in. They have put in systems, individual systems, and Essex as well. Except I think Essex actually wants then for their downtown location only. But I think the story on Old Saver goes a little further. There was a thousand or so properties. Nine hundred have been addressed with traditional or individual septic systems. There's a hundred or so properties in Indian Town that need special consideration, a collection pipe. And I think that was also something that Dave Potts was trying to say to you, that there may be some houses, not a thousand, but some houses that we have to move some water from, but not all the way to New London. It would be a lot cheaper than moving a thousand properties sewage all the way to New London. That's what Dave Potts was trying to tell you. Okay.
Well, I'm gonna answer that one because unfortunately, fifteen years ago, when some of us first started here.
Yes.
That's what we wanted to do, was move the sewage to Hundred Acres Golf Area and deep shot that down.
Yeah.
Deep shot it down because there are nine hundred and nine houses.
But there is no location that you can put the sewage in the town of Olive.
You could have you could have built, if you wanted to, if there was any insight in this town, you could have put a pumping station wherever you wanted to in Soundview and collected for Soundview and Area B and put it into Hundred Acres, and there was more than enough properties.
The other reason Deep didn't want to do that is it borders a well field.
No, it doesn't. The the well field is almost a mile and a half.
No, that was Deep's answer, actually. There's something at the property next door that is a potential well. And that's why Deep shot it down, and that you can go back through the records and find that. It's absolutely true.
No, I agree. I remember I read all the history and I I agree with you, Rob, but the thing is what Dave Potts, I'm not sure you were there that evening.
Listen to Dave Potts, too.
Yeah.
The problems are, he puts stuff out there that isn't approvable by Connecticut DEP or DPH right now either.
A lot of their systems have been approved.
Yeah, they are when they're on-site septic system.
Right.
He starts talking about putting systems out in the roadway in the right of way. Deep will not approve that. It won't.
Any Alex?
We have.
Yeah, it's not your property. It's a more challenging thing to do in Deep's eyes, and they don't do it.
There was a Connecticut water well.
It's deep. It's the problem. It's not that we're saying, no, we can, we're just.
I think what he was saying is there's ways that for most of the properties, you could use a regular septic system, is what he was trying to say. There may be some, a handful, like an old like an Old Saver, that needs special consideration. But not all, not all thousand properties.
I I would I would have to say that very few properties in Soundview would have a, oh, regular septic system. It may be an engineer.
We haven't explored that, so we don't know. No one's gone property to property and explored that.
And it's one tenth of one percent. We've had two failures right now. That's out of two hundred and two hundred households.
Well, you've had more failures in in recent years.
Had fixes. We've had fixes and some and lots of replacements.
And and so, you know, the other thing that DEP says is all of those, or almost all of those, I don't want to say all because some are conforming. Most of the most of the septic systems down there are non-conforming to current health codes. Almost all, because you just don't have enough land.
You know, so I built my house in nineteen ninety nine. If you came into my house now, there's probably some building codes that have changed that I would have to start tearing down walls, but as long as I don't tear down the walls, I'm okay.
So building codes, though, are different than health codes and fire codes. Those are the only two that are really enforceable and not grandfathered. Health codes, fire codes.
Oh, it's change all the time. We don't just.
Building codes, yes, and if a fire code changes, you have to upgrade.
Hmm, well, actually, the problem is Connecticut, Deep and DPH don't change their codes very much, and they haven't approved alternative systems and innovative type technologies that Deep in Connecticut is stuck in the past.
It is.
And they won't approve things that might actually work at some of these properties, and I do agree with that. But.
You know, I do know.
Allow it. That's the problem.
We are behind the times.
Yes.
So here we are, spending seventy million per technology that old and has a history, expensive history of breaking, which is breaking right now. And we just saw in the paper another seven hundred million gallons of sewage coming from Massachusetts to White Sands.
Ridiculous. Can I ask a question?
Who who are you? John, are you?
John.
Who?
Blood.
No.
Sorry, I can't be John.
Not now.
Okay.
Not right now. You can do it at public comment. Um. And then uh, well, please don't talk during the meeting. You you're allowed to talk during public comment. Thank you. Um. We've gone through this argument circularly for years. We are directed by the DEP to continue down the path of putting in sewers. That's what this referendum is for. If if the town doesn't want sewers, they don't have to pass a referendum. We won't be able to, we won't be able to build. So I I don't know what else to do. I I'm here to do the bidding for the town. I believe that we could get fined. I believe that we can get a consent order. I will, I'm sure we'll lose the twenty five percent loan, and I believe in the long run sewers will be installed down Soundview, and I believe the Soundview residents will benefit from it. I I I understand that you you have a difference of opinion.
I do.
But until town leadership says, stop, I'm not, I don't want sewers in this town. I don't want you to keep pushing it. I believe that I have to fulfill the obligations to what was started and what the state has asked us to do.
Yeah, just saying, going back to what was started, just one second, you know, you, I think you said that Bonnie Reinsmer, but if you remember at the last public meeting, it was Frank Noe who jumped up and said, I'm the one who called deep, I'm the one who got in contact with him.
Probably for Old Colony. Bonnie Reinschneider, we have a taped recording from, was it Bob Greasy? Who who was there? He he came up and said, Bonnie Bonnie Den- Bonnie Reinschneider invited us into this town. We do not go where we're not wanted.
That is not true.
He said it. Okay.
Came up to her at a meeting that I'm.
Uh, all I can tell you is what the gentleman said at a public meeting, wasn't even a private meeting, it was a townwide meeting, he said that. So uh, I don't know, I don't know, uh, and it doesn't matter at this point, I.
Well, then we shouldn't bring it up because we don't know. Say, did you argue on your agenda because?
We're still, it's well, it was on, it's under, it's under my, we decided to place it under my report. Um, Andrea made motions to to add several items and uh put it, put it there.
Can I ask a technical question that wasn't, that was presented but not explained? And Randy's not here to explain it. Um. In one of our WPCA meetings, we, when when we tried to, or you tried to get the bioc station and the pump house together. And Randy explained that it's the best place for it. Now, the bioc station is on Gorton Avenue out of Soundview. What happens to the smell from the pump house, the Forest Main, Miami Beach, uh, um, Old Colony and Olive Shores, when it meets at the pump house?
So you get the only the only place you get odors is from the wet well. The the pumps are self-contained, the pipe is self-contained. You get no odors from there, you get it from the wet well. And that is where all four beach associations will be dumping. Um. They have, they have designed the station with aerators in there to reduce it, but like I had said, bi oxide is is an odor control because it stops the formation of hydrogen sulfide, which is the odor used now. So if you were to put it in the wet well in lieu of the Forest Main, you would get the benefit of not having the smell because the hydrogen sulfide is being controlled in the wet well instead of in the pipe. Um. It's not designed that way. And uh, apparently, um, that idea was not received very well in school and nowhere.
Well, the only reason why I ask is because I I invite anybody to go to Charlie's Restaurant, Nyanx, and go in the parking lot, take a good whiff because the pump station is right in back of the parking lot. And if and if that's the odor that's going to permeate the area, your your multimillion dollar houses aren't going to be built.
It's not going to increase property values, that's for sure.
So I just I just wanted to.
I understand. There are other ways of controlling odor. Um, you know, like I said, they put aerators in this wet well for that reason. Normally, you don't. If everyone decides to live there, that would help matters a lot also because uh, they cycle, if they cycle regularly in short periods, hydrogen sulfide doesn't have a chance to form, so it's 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 gone. You don't, the smell is there because it sits and the bacteria start to eat it and you get hydrogen sulfide. So uh, that is, I mean, that's it, I believe it would have been a better place, but it's not designed that way.
Okay.
Uh, that's. Thanks. Um, are there, is is there any other questions here?
I think Brian has something to say.
I'm sorry?
I think Brian has something.
Okay, uh, Brian, could you, um, could could you please? Uh, do you have any questions, Brian?
I have three quick points, and I hate to have our reading dragged down any longer. Uh, first one is, I do have a written estimate here from Alan Hall, who is the president of B and L Construction for connecting my property on Portland Avenue uh, to the system, and it comes out to be eighty three hundred and thirty five dollars, not four to five thousand dollars, Mr. Chairman. But I just want to let you know, I do have that if you want a copy of that. Uh, my second point is, is I'm very concerned that anytime we talk about extra money, the word contingency comes up. And that makes me nauseous. I was a contractor one time myself, and contingencies became the dumping place for a lot of things. And I don't want to prolong the conversation on that. And contingencies became the dumping place for a lot of things. And I don't want to prolong the conversation on that. And lastly, uh, Steve, I'm very concerned about the referendum coming up, if we ever get a date for it. Because I think more and more people in town are beginning to think about uh, what's going to happen to them next. And also, some of our, uh, older residents here in the Soundview area, uh, are really questioning if they really going to have the money to fund this thing. So. Those are just my couple of comments for tonight. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I had a question if this is a public.
No, are you? Oh.
Go ahead.
No, he's.
He's not.
I just, I have, uh, just one, I, I, I do have a closing comment. I think that this was a, a really rich discussion. And I think, um, I, I really appreciate everyone's input to move the, uh, presentation that Steve has to give. It's important to hear everyone's thoughts and comments. And it's, I, I really appreciate that. And it's helping me think about what I need to do for the, the card that, you know, we have to send out for the referendum when we get that date. Um, okay, do, are we going to the next item?
We're going to all business, which is your additional stuff.
So Dennis, I, um, and to the whole commission, I, I apologize. These are only, uh, virtual, I mean, Steve will project what I have, but I don't have paper copies uh, at the meeting tonight. The first thing is the pump out mailer. Um, there is a.
No, no.
Or if you, if you can just, I thought everyone would want to see what it looks like before.
Did you email that to me, Andrea?
Yeah, uh, yes, I did. All right. So what I could do is email it to, we could email it to everyone after um, the discussion. You, you do have it for projection. There were like four attachments.
Yep.
It's very colorful.
That one. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did get it. I'll flip it for everyone.
Yeah, it keeps, it keeps flipping upside down. Um, the biggest feedback, we, we have two items that I want to highlight. Um, the pump out card, we, the, the suggestion was to make the phone number and contact bigger, especially for folks that as we age, have more difficulty reading numbers. So we can increase that font size and there's enough room on the card to do that. And the other thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is our ordinance, as we said during this meeting tonight, is every seven year minimum, um, for pumping out our septic or whatever, um, alternate sewer avoidance. Some people have cesspools. Um, if you have a cesspool, obviously, I hope it's obvious that you would need to pump it out more than every seven years. But as a placeholder in the future, um, that we have a very uh, but it, that's a very generous pump out timetable. And we may want to revisit making that shorter. And, um, every three to five years, Steve alluded to that at, during this meeting. So we are gonna uh, work on that in the future. But this current card will use our current seven year pump out. And I just wanted to make sure everyone saw what will be sent out to our residents who need to be reminded about a pump out. Can everyone?
Andrew, when are these being sent?
Uh, pardon me, Erica?
When are these being sent out? Just so I know to start checking.
Um, so the, the thought is bring it to this meeting and then send them out. I just wanted to make sure everyone on our commission was aware of what was going out and if there were any other comments. So we do want to send them out right, right away, but we needed, we didn't have a meeting before that.
Right. So you're gonna, you're gonna increase the size of the font for the, uh, contact us stuff?
Yes.
Okay, now, Erica, W P C A at olm dot C T dot gov or dash C T dot gov is is you, is, is the right address there. Okay.
But Andrea, am I pulling the list from Carmanu or is someone else doing that? Because this is the first I'm hearing of this.
Uh, you, you would be the one to do it because, uh, we have a, that, uh, is, is that going to be a right for you?
I'm just leaving for vacation tomorrow, three thirty in the morning. So I'll be gone for a bit. But they're not printed yet. So you're, you've got. Well, they can't print them. They need the addresses. They need the addresses to print them, need the list.
Um, okay, so when do you come back from vacation?
I'll be back in the twentieth.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, if I'm just being honest, it's not going to happen that day. That'll be my first day back at my real job. So.
We, we totally get that. Um, okay, um, thank you for letting us know that. If we.
I just need more notice next time.
So we just need to have the list ready for, um, the mailers, correct?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, just export it from Carmanu. That's fine.
We'll, we'll be able, we'll be able to get this out before September, so.
That, that's, yes. Okay, thank, thank, enjoy your vacation. Thank you for, how are you going to do the minutes? Oh my gosh.
I'm going to do it on the plane tomorrow. I have wifi.
Okay. She thought everything. All right, um, all right. So if this mailer looks acceptable to you right now, a hundred percent of our residents have septic or sewers, a hundred percent will not receive this. It's only those who need to have a pump out notice. And that's what the list is that Erica was just referring to. Okay, does silence, are there any comments? Okay. So we can go for, I don't think we need a vote. We're just going to go forward then, right?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is about the referendum and a website notice. So Steve, um, you're going to see, um, Katie had come up with proactively something to post on our website. And I actually wanted to show that to the commission, members of the commission and believe it or not, um, the name of this project has had many different names. Um, and I thought maybe we would match what's on the pending referendum, which says Soundview Beach and miscellaneous Town Area B Sewer Project. It hasn't been referred to specifically like that before, but if we're going to match what is on the referendum, I guess we would use that title for the website. Does that make sense to everyone?
Isn't it a town sewer project?
It is.
Okay, so.
But the referendum actually is, and it's all the proposed referendum actually says amendment resolution related to Soundview Beach and Miscellaneous Town Area B Sewer Project.
So, I, I mean, I, I think this is fine. I mean, we, we could refer to it as what is going to appear on the, uh, referendum. But uh, it's an informational meeting. If people don't recognize this as being the same project, um, I mean, it's an informational meeting for the sewer project for Soundview and Area B. Uh, it, it doesn't. I, I don't think people are going to confuse this informational meeting with some other informational meeting about Soundview and Area B. Um, it, this gets more to the point. I mean, that's an official phrase that they're using because it comes off the set of plans and documents. Um, you know.
My only thought was it is a town project and it might exclude other people from, from attending.
Okay, so what is, what is the official name?
The official name is a mouthful. Um.
Yeah.
Okay, let me try it again. Amendment resolution related to Soundview Beach and Miscellaneous Town Area B Sewer Project. That is the refer, that's what we'd be voting on.
Right. Does anyone have any thoughts on this?
Like if someone did the website.
Well, are you sending out this informational meeting message separate from the referendum? Because we don't even know yet.
This is the, the town.
There's two things. So Mary, there's a couple of things.
Sending out this informational meeting.
Yeah.
Notice separate from a referendum notice.
It's, it's being posted.
So the first thing is posted on the website. The second thing we're going to talk about is the card that will go out prior to the referendum. So this is what, yes.
The card is already designed by a bonding attorney. You already put the language together.
Okay.
Steve has, Steve has that from Michael Patello.
Well, we were going to send out an informational card, which is different than the, the official announcement of the referendum.
Well, let's do the website thing first. Is, is this what you all want to see posted on the website?
I guess, could we put Old Line W P C A in front of the W P C A just to make it clear it's Old Line?
I agree.
I like that.
That's a line, I guess.
You do have a town seal line.
Yeah, but just if it says Old Line W P C A, is that like, it'd be saying?
That's, that's good point since there are five in the town. Yeah, so why don't we do that? And, and I, you know, for simplicity sake, I think we should just leave it.
Just leave it the way it is?
Do a project for Soundview and Area B. I mean, we could do the official thing, but I don't think people are going to be confused.
All right.
And obviously, the date's going to change.
So the voting, the referendum voting though will be all, all folks who are able to vote in the town. So I didn't know if this meant if someone else in the town wanted to attend, if they're going to vote, they might want to attend. I mean, they know what the focus is, but. All right.
Yeah, I mean, it's open, it's, it's open to the whole town.
And, and it was advertised, it's advertised on the website. My, my, uh, newsletter said all residents from the town should attend if they want information.
Yes, you did say that. Yep. Okay. All right. So we'll just add the Old Line W P C A to that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that. The second thing is just an outline and, um, Steve, you and Martha might have more to do with this, but I was just trying to outline so that it seems like it's hurry up and then go, what we're going to put on the, the mailer. And you have that in the attachment too. And it, so maybe we could pull that up. Let's see if I can find it. And again, I apologize. I didn't know you'd want paper copies. But I will for next time try to provide paper copies. So this one is, uh, in, uh, black and blue ink. And there's fiscal responsibility highlighted in yellow. So I, I did this to try to summarize a lot of the discussions we're having in the PowerPoint. It's a, I'm trying to keep it simple, short, um, neutral, positive. Uh, we'll have the, this, I have the special town meeting, but we might not have that on here because of the time between that. If that happens, and we'll have that meeting before the referendum notice goes out. And then Martha, what, what is the exact timeframe before the referendum that this has to be ready and mailed?
Well, I, first of all, I can't see it. So hold on a second. We have to be very careful because once the referendum has been given a date.
Yes.
You can't send anything out that would say that you were going for or against.
Right.
So you have to be very careful of what you send out.
Right.
There's a timeline that, have you shared the timeline with her from Michael Patello?
Well, I think that timeline is.
The timeline is the same. It's, you just move it up. There's so many, Michael Patello has a timeline that he put together of when you can send things out.
Okay.
I have that and we just need to move the tape up. But it's still, it's still doable. I mean, it's just, you know, it's like three weeks. You have to have, put the paper, you have to put something in the paper. Then three weeks later, you've got to have mailing goes out. Then you have to have something else. And then there's a drop, drop dead date. You cannot say another word.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's after it's voted for referendum.
Right, after the Board of Finance votes to go to refer, the town meeting. After the town meeting votes it to go to referendum, you can't send anything out.
All right. So I, I wanted to, um, ask Steve to project this and perhaps we need a vote from, from the folks after we have a discussion to give us permission to, um, be able to comply with all these timelines in the process, because we won't have enough time to bring something to the commission before the mailing. So I just want to make sure we, we have examples. Um, I want to be able to work with Martha and Steve and make sure we get this right. But this was just a sort of a outline bullet of what I thought was going to go on the, the, the card.
Yeah. So I think, I, I think this is, I don't think, I think Mike Patel's is more of an official notice. It's not. It's not necessarily, I mean, Mike's not saying it's environmentally sound, it's cleaner water. His is more, you know, notice to people that there's a referendum coming up on such and such a day.
Okay.
Uh, I, I like, you know, I think that we should do something because we want people to vote on it. Um, it's their town. Does everyone agree that, that, uh, if it's reviewed by myself and Martha that, uh, when the final product is completed, it can be mailed?
Yes. I have no problem.
So who's going to do it? Can someone motion and then second it? And before we have a, just, uh, the motion, I just.
I don't think we actually need, I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
A majority of us have.
Why don't you, why don't you just make a motion saying you'll send out a mailing once it's approved by Steve, Martha, and we run it through council just to make sure that we're not breaking any laws as far as.
Want to do that, uh, John?
I make a motion that we send out an informational packet after review by the chairman and the first select person.
And town.
And town council.
Right. Okay, I thought it was sick. Um, all right, all, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. So it looks good, Andrea, just let's.
All right. I just wanted to make sure there were no surprises and that everyone knew what we were doing. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Um, it's, it's getting late. Um, I'd like a motion to postpone new business till next, next month.
I'll make a motion to postpone new business next month.
I second it. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? All right, uh, there's, I do have some correspondence. Uh, it, it's from an attorney. It's a Freedom of Information Act requesting, uh, information, uh, on everything, uh, as, as town council. on everything, uh, as, as town councils put it overly broad. But we'll, we'll go ahead and give them whatever I have. Um, it's, it concerns, uh, the uh, shared infrastructure as well as this project. So anything, anything dealing with this project or shared infrastructure, uh, they're requesting. I wrote back and said, uh, we will be working on trying to comply, uh, with, with those, with that request. And I'm getting, uh, taking listening to town council on how to, how to respond. What, what's, what's left? Correspondence, um.
Public comment.
Public comments next. Thanks. Uh, all right, public comment. Um, I, I'd like to take anyone here first and then I'll listen to people or, or listen to comments on, uh, on, online. Uh, so is there any person here that has a public comment? Okay, please come up, state your name and address.
Hello, Malillo, fifteen and twenty-one Portland Avenue. I, two things. I just want to say one thing about, you know, the, the septic systems. I have two houses. One house, the septic system has been in there seven years. Another house, thirty-six years. I, we've never had a problem. It's only seasonally used. Most of the houses that, in that area are seasonally used. Pumped out regularly every time the company has looked at it and said, everything's fine. You're okay. No problems. So I, most of my friends in that area have no problem. There are just a few that I don't really know about, but you do. But most of the people that I know in Area B and in, um, Portland, Hartford and Swan have no problems. Just wanted to make sure you understood that. I was trying to figure out EDUs. One house would probably be one EDU. Um, I think from the meeting the other night, uh, that was difficult for people to calculate individual costs. And, and I think we still don't know what the bottom line is. And I think when I read your answers, um, to the questions, you had mentioned the EDUs and the formula. And I asked Mary and Dennis because I thought, well, how do I calculate my own to know? And Mary told me the same thing that she just stated tonight that, um, that formula may be flawed. I don't know that, but you do. And so I'm asking, is the formula going to be reworked so that it's more accurate for us? That's my question.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that would like to, uh, speak?
Uh, yes, John Flood, twenty Saunders Hollow Road, um, wanted to just ask if, if this were to pass the referendum and so on, are there proposed estimated dates of when the overall project may start? And when it's estimated to be completed?
Hey, uh, I'll, I'll take that. I'll, I'll, I mean, yeah. The different contractors, but I'll put at least old lime stuff in, in the, uh, in the presentation. We, we have a, our specification, uh, does not allow uh, construction during, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day. So. Consider it more of a winter project. Um, so anyone else online? Jim?
Uh, no, I'm okay, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Um, not hearing anyone else, uh, public comment is closed. May I have a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so moved.
I gotta go eat my supper.